Good afternoon. I will now call to order our March eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five Committee of the Hall meeting. Madam Clerk, for the record of this meeting, please let it reflect that Councillor Roy de Clemente is absent with notice. Are there any declarations of interest from members of council? I'm not seeing any. Seeing none, I will move to item C, our land acknowledgement statement. The town of East Goulambury recognises and acknowledges the lands originally used and occupied by the First Peoples of the Williams Treaty First Nations and other indigenous peoples, and on behalf of council, I thank them for sharing this land. We also acknowledge the Chipawas of Georgina Island First Nation as East Goulambury's closest First Nation community, and recognise the unique relationship the Chipawas have with the lands and the waters of this territory. They are the water protectors and environmental steward of these lands, and we join them in these responsibilities. We are at item D, community announcements. I want to remind everyone of the Run Walk for Southlake Health to be held on April twenty-seventh. Please put it in your calendar. Team EG is registered, and this year I am the team captain. Everyone is welcome to join the team and/or donate to show your support for our local hospital. Every dollar is needed and very much appreciated. Thank you to those who have already registered and donated. Are there any announcements from members of council? Councillor Crothers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. We're going to hear more about this in a little bit, but on March twenty-ninth at eleven a.m., the library is celebrating their fiftieth anniversary, and the celebration will take place at the Hall and Landing Public Library, and I'm sure we'll get more information when the library presents later. Thank you.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to say that there's an opportunity to have more pancakes at the Mount Albert Lions Community Centre and on Mount Albert Road this coming Saturday between nine a.m. and twelve p.m., and they'll be selling Lion Eric's famous maple syrup. So we look forward to seeing everybody for breakfast on Saturday. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councillor Crohn, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just wanted to remind everyone that it's a month away, but on April nineteenth, we're having the Easter Bunny Hike, and that's going to be always a good time at the Ross Family Complex in Mount Albert. As well, we have community cleanup events happening April fifth in Mount Albert, April nineteenth in Sharon, and I believe we have another one in Holland Landing at another date, and I don't have it in front of me. But we have some cleanups coming up on the month of April. It is Earth Month, so it's always good to get people out and show some love for the planet. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Other members? I'm not seeing anyone at this time. We'll move along. Oh, I'm sorry. Under item E, there are no deputations and no presentations under item F, so we will move to the East Goulambury Public Library. Just like to welcome Christine Glenn, Chair of the Library Board, who is with us presently to present the East Goulambury Public Library Presentation Annual Report two thousand and twenty-four. Good to have you with us.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council and staff. Today, we are excited to share our EGPL two thousand and twenty-four annual report. Collectively, we have so much to be proud of.
Next slide, please.
Our vision and mission come to life through our key priorities: building healthy communities, expanding access, and providing exceptional experiences. These ensure the library remains a welcoming, inclusive, and enriching place for all. The library fosters connection, civic engagement, and social support through programs, events, and partnerships. It enriches lives and creates new opportunities promoting wellbeing, inclusivity, and belonging. Literacy goes beyond reading. It includes digital, financial, and informational skills. The library removes barriers by providing safe spaces, accessible resources, and flexible ways to engage, ensuring learning opportunities for all.
Next slide, please.
So here's what our guests are telling us. The library is more than just a place. It's an experience. Our visitors call it a space that feels good to be in, a place that is fun, free, and where people of all ages can explore, learn, and connect in a welcoming environment. None of this would be possible without the dedicated staff at EGPL. It's their passion, creativity, and commitment that brings our vision and mission to life every day. Thank you to them for making the library space a place where everyone feels valued, inspired, and supported.
Next slide, please.
We have great community support. We sincerely appreciate the many individuals, organisations, and partners who support East Goulambury Public Library. Thank you to the EG gardeners for maintaining the literacy garden and the Friends of the Library for their ongoing financial support. We're grateful to our community members and groups who donated resources and time to the Hall and Landing Food Pantry and Library literacy programmes. A big thank you to our funding partners, including the Ministry of Tourism and Culture, Canada Summer Jobs Grants, and Ontario Library Services for helping us expand programmes and services. We also want to recognise the efforts of our many generous local donors, including local churches, community groups, and individuals. And of course, we would not miss expressing our sincere gratitude to this town council and staff and our residents for their ongoing and unwavering support of EGPL. And at that, I'll turn it over to Heather to talk about our two thousand and twenty-four highlights.
Thank you, Christine. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Council. My name is Heather Ables, Deputy CEO of the East Goulambury Public Library. Last year, the library launched its new strategic plan built on three priorities: building healthy communities, expanding access, and providing exceptional experiences. I'll provide some highlights of key accomplishments from this past year aligning with these three priorities. So to start, in support of building healthy communities, we enriched our programmes with partnerships that highlighted local knowledge and talent. Our two thousand and twenty-four partners included, but were not limited to, EG's local farmers, New Make-It, the Chipawas of Georgina Island, and P Flag York Region. In addition to our partnerships, the library launched its first kindergarten readiness programme to prepare children for the journey of starting school with a focus on nurturing a love for reading and learning. Alongside community programming, the library continued to run the food pantry, supporting over seventeen hundred visits last year. Our pantry runs with the help of nearly thirty volunteers and is resourced by residents, churches, and community groups who generously donate to this cause. Next slide, please. The library expanded access through both its services and collections. We now offer access to video games, and we expanded our Library of Things collection to include a shredder, an automated code reader, radon detectors, and garden weeders, giving residents the opportunity to borrow practical household items. To expand convenience service options, we introduced self-serve holds to skip the line, and we upgraded our public internet stations for fast internet browsing and improved accessibility features. In addition, customers can now access our wireless printing service to print from any device from any location. Next slide, please. In support of providing exceptional experiences, we enhanced our virtual branch by launching a new website with a fresh design, which now includes online program registration and study room bookings. Two thousand and twenty-four also marked the launch of our growth plan, outlining a comprehensive vision for the library's future development. And finally, we introduced a new logo and branding package showcasing a fresh and modern image of the library as we prepare for future growth. Now I will hand it over to Sandra Sador, CEO of the library, who will share some metrics from two thousand and twenty-four.
Thank you, Heather. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Council. My name is Sandra Sador. I'm the CEO of the East Goulambury Public Library. Thank you for the opportunity today to present the accomplishments of our two thousand and twenty-four business plan. With over two hundred and twenty-six thousand items borrowed, our community has responded to our commitment to service and our dedication to building a diverse collection that reflects the needs of our community. Their interests range from the hundred and thirty-one thousand books borrowed to the growing interest in our Library of Things and the active use of our digital library resources. Next slide. Our community of learners continue to borrow our physical books and materials at increasing levels with a strong base of customers accessing over sixty thousand digital items in two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide. The library offers programmes to spark curiosity. In our wide range of resources, over fifty-six hundred children and caregivers attended our literacy-based programmes, meeting the need in our community for early childhood learning and socialisation. Our library spaces invite adults to explore and share their ideas in interactive programmes that are relevant to their lived experiences. Next slide. We continue to expand our programme offerings, looking for efficiencies in delivery of service to meet the growing level of participants. Our Maker Corner programmes offer ongoing activities to foster an interest in design technology. Next slide. Our community owns their library and access this community living room space with close to seventy-five thousand in-person visits alone in two thousand and twenty-four. Next slide. Library membership is one of our key indicators. In two thousand and twenty-four, we welcomed over seventeen hundred new library members, with many of those cardholders joining us during our popular summer reading club. Our eighty-five hundred active users in two thousand and twenty-four will provide us with a benchmark to track our future growth and expansion. Next slide. Our library living rooms offer free Wi-Fi and access to information with highly skilled library navigators ready to find solutions together. The need for workspaces is on the rise in our community. Our library offers study rooms, ideal for online meetings or small working groups. Just another example of the library's relevancy within this growing community. Next slide. This report substantiates that customers are accessing our services and utilising our spaces. Currently, we are at a space deficit with only two branches serving our growing population. But with the opening of the Help, we will meet our growth plan objective. With a new collection of thirty-three thousand items, a maker space equipped with design technology, access to skilled staff, and space to support individuals, families, groups, small business, and social agencies. The Queensville branch of the Help is well positioned to serve our community. Next slide. As Councillor Crothers extended, we are looking forward to March the twenty-ninth, where our mayor will be joining us for remarks of celebration and fun activities for everyone. We are anchored in our rich past and equipped to launch into the future of our new Queensville location at the Help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Questions? Councillor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor, and I want to acknowledge that it's been a very busy year, obviously, two thousand and twenty-four, for the library. And I wanted to dig down a little deeper into the metrics that you've presented to us. And so you mentioned that there were over seventy-five thousand in-person visits, and there are approximately eighty-five hundred active users in two thousand and twenty-four. And so I'm just curious if you have information and data on how many of those in-person visits or the number of users over two hundred and twenty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-nine items borrowed? How many of those users of the library are EG residents?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Leahy. Thank you for that question. Most definitely, I can certainly speak to the fact that our library members, our cardholders, do represent, those eighty-five hundred, do represent numerous families. They are predominantly local EG residents. I can certainly provide you with those exact figures in a further email or communication directly to you. But we are proud of the fact that that eighty-five hundred cardholders do represent numerous families, where each family will have one card but may have a family of four individuals from the local community. So our focus is on serving the needs of our local residents. That is, first and foremost, we survey our community and we ask for their response and input in our services.
And if I may, Madam Mayor, through you, a follow-up question. So is there any way to track that? So if you're going to follow up with information, do you have a tracking system to identify which users are local EG taxpayers?
Through our ILS system, oh, through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Leahy, thank you for that question. Through our ILS system, we do have access to our area residents and certainly collect that information. We can provide a high level of the amount of residents we serve and at a high level those from outside of the community. Our ILS does have limits. We work with OLC and are part of a larger consortium. So there are limitations, but I'm more than willing to provide you with the information we have.
Thank you very much. And one last question. So with regard to those residents, is there a focus, equal focus at both libraries on languages and the books in varying languages? So for example, at Mount Albert Branch and the Hall and Landing Branch, do you have approximately the same percentage of books in other languages for other, you know, members of our community?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Leahy. We're very proud of our ever-growing multilingual collection, and certainly we've had a recent donation from a local resident who was wanting her son to be able to experience books in Cantonese and Mandarin, and certainly came forward and has been more than willing to lend her story for promotions of our multilingual collection. Residents are more than welcome to peruse the collections. Predominantly, our largest collection is at our Hall and Landing location. But certainly via our online digital library, individuals can put holds on titles and access whatever title they would like from our multilingual collection. It is growing, and we are proud of the fact that we are focusing in on those languages that are most prominent here in EG, so Mandarin, Cantonese, and Russian.
Thank you very much.
Councillor Foster, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. And just a comment more than a question. I think in a meeting that you and I had earlier, I think I mentioned that I'm a bit of a numbers guy when I look at this kind of thing. All your engagement numbers are great. When I look at programming and participants and circulation, library visits, the study room use, the wireless use, everything is up, 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 which is what we want to see. So in my mind, that makes a lot of sense, and it proves that we, as the town and the library, are certainly on the right track. The other thing I wanted to mention, great picture of the old library, which serves as the gatehouse at the temple. And I hope that picture turns up in a real prominent spot in the new location in Queensville, a nice, nice big one. Something else that you might want to look at, that's another little bit of a history lesson here. I did find a book, I'm not sure what book it was, that indicates that library was across the road from the United Church in Queensville, which is wrong. It was across the road from the church to the south, which I can't remember what church that was, but I can certainly remember it being there. So if you come across history that says it was on the west side of Leslie Street, it's wrong. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Foster. Thank you. We will definitely double-check our figures. Some of our dedicated historical staff have been on that, and we have prepared a slideshow for our presentation on our fiftieth birthday party anniversary on March twenty-ninth. So yes, we will do due diligence. And I agree with you. I find that photograph so charming, and the fact that it's still here and people can visit it at the Sharon Museum and Gardens is something to be noted, for sure.
Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, through you to Ms. Sador. Thank you for your presentation. It's very thorough and just when I think you guys can't do anything else, anything more, you defy it and you keep doing more. What, I think Heather mentioned that we have a relationship, strategic relationship with New Make-It. Could you, I'm really curious about it. Could you tell us a little bit more about that?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Crohn. The strength of a library is community-led programming. It's when you engage with individuals in the community and they have a sense of ownership. I spoke to the library being their living room. And our Maker Corners and our Maker Spaces, as we develop them, we seek ownership, ownership of that space. So when we look at connecting with maker communities, we know that the strength and the success of our new Queensville library maker space will be on the participation of those individuals that are dedicated makers. Those individuals have a way of sparking curiosity unlike anyone else. So they come alongside our digital experience specialists, and they offer up a local expertise. They share their projects, and they ignite interest in individuals who may otherwise be a little timid, a little timid to perhaps embark down a road of using a laser cutter or thinking of new and creative ways to fix problems, day-to-day problems. So by connecting with local community groups, we can leverage that excitement. So we look forward to them occupying our space, offering community workshops, and utilising and activating it in ways that our staff just don't have the same kind of integrity of community presence just by sheer number. They occupy a space and they create excitement, and we're looking forward to that excitement occupying our new Queensville space.
Thank you. Just one more question. That's amazing, and good for you for doing that. Looking, going back to the engagement numbers, they are astonishing. Two hundred and twenty-six thousand items loaned out. That's for a community as small as ours. That's phenomenal. I was just curious, when you look at all your engagement numbers, how does that inform your planning decisions for two thousand and twenty-five and beyond?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Councillor Crohn. Thanks for that question. I may mention the fact that we'll be utilising our library membership figures as a benchmark. It's a fantastic measurement tool for us. It is one of our KPIs, among a host of others. And certainly it allows us to say, okay, this is where we were with two physical locations and with our digital library, and of course, our locker space in Sharon. Where is that going now that we're going to have a third library space in a large health and active living plaza with high traffic? How can we take a look at that increase in traffic and ensure that we are making connections and that we are, in many ways, recruiting membership? Certainly in meetings with Parks, Recreation, and Culture, there is going to be a focus as we're opening the Help on memberships at the Help. Our focus will be the same, Councillor Crohn. Our focus is on library memberships. They're free. They're open to all. They're a benefit of taxpayers, and the resources and services are what we're going to be broadcasting. So we're doing active campaigns, and you may have noticed on the last screen there was an image of a postcard with some translation by Councillor Leahy. Thank you for that. And those postcards will be activating our community. They're focusing in on Queensville. And we have two more phases yet to go. We're inviting them to join our e-newsletter, and through that, we're able to leverage more communication with them regarding resources. regarding resources we're offering and activating memberships, exciting them to get memberships before the opening of our Queensville location at the Help, and being able to leverage that communication to advance more interested individuals, more new residents here in EG. So our focus areas for our direct mail are really those Queensville neighborhoods and some of those newer subdivisions, where people have come in and perhaps not experienced the benefit of their local library.
Counselor Cruthers, and then Counselor, sorry, Counselor Johns.
Yes.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Out of respect to Counselor Cruthers as serving on the board, let her go last. I just wanted to say actually just thank you. You know, we can look at the data and the stats, and obviously, that's our role here, sitting behind the dais, to look at those stats. But I had the privilege with my five-year-old and three-year-old partaking in some of the programming that was happening over March break at the Ross Family Complex in Mount Albert. And one of the things that stuck out to me, obviously, on the stats, everything's up, up, up. And much like in our Parks Recreation Department, we're going to have a presentation later and everything's up, 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 and everybody is doing a phenomenal job. But the work that is happening between the library and Parks Recreation, like when we walked in there, a seniors group was taking place. There were a different group of kids that were working, working and playing in the back. There were folks that were working on the computers, activities happening at the table from coloring to working on the computers. And whatever the data says, yes. But when you see it come to life and the parking lot's full, people were outside picking up garbage as part of the programming as well. You have really succeeded in creating a third place, and that is so important within the community. And you don't just see it through the numbers, but I had the opportunity to feel it. And so I just wanted to say thank you. You're doing incredible work and nothing but support for you and just congratulations.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Johns. Thank you so much for your support. And most definitely, this past March break, we received a lot of kudos from parents that really enjoyed all of the value-added programs that were happening within our Maker Corners. In addition to that, our dedicated programs that were focused in on nature. So really recognizing climate action being a priority, being a part of that, and leading something so simple as a garbage pickup or bird watching, walking down the paths right close to the Ross Family Complex, and ensuring they know of the value add in and around the libraries, not just within the centers themselves.
Counselor Cruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you. I just want to say thank you for a great presentation. What a great way to kick off the afternoon with something so positive. As a member of the library board, I want to, you know, assure my colleagues about the amount of oversight that the library board has. So this is, this presentation, we got a lot more details, and we see the finances. And the people on that board are really top-notch and provide such great oversight for planning, for accountability. And so thank you to your staff for everything that went in to make this presentation possible, to the numbers, the resources that are available. Years ago, when the internet was becoming a thing and people were using more computers, there was this thought, what's going to happen to libraries? But libraries, to me, are so much more than books. People who define a library as books haven't been to a library lately. Because to me, libraries are about resource sharing. So the Library of Things is absolutely amazing, especially as our community grows and we see people with smaller houses who maybe can't have all the different things that you can get from the Library of Things. So that type of sharing is, it's a wonderful community builder, but it also speaks to affordability, and it speaks to the environment. Does everyone need to have a drill? Or when you, when you need your drill, can you go and borrow it from the library? Or the radon detectors or all the other things that are there? So, and the opportunity to try a musical instrument. Like, how wonderful is that, to bring home a musical instrument? See if you're any good at it. Decide if you want to buy one or you want to just try it out every now and again. The Maker Space, the Library of Things, all the services that you provide are so important to our community. So thank you for that. And I'm always reminded that how the library is one of the few places in our community where you can go and not have to pay. So if you go instead of the coffee shop, you're expected to buy a coffee. Even if you come into, into the municipal offices here, you're expected to conduct business. But the library welcomes everybody and it's a safe space. So thank you for providing that to our community. Thank you.
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Cruthers. Thank you for those kind words and your ongoing support. I would like to second that. The library board is a phenomenal group of dedicated volunteers. And each month, they come together and bring their very best and contribute all of their professional skills and abilities to ensure that the library is governed in that way. And I'd like to thank Christine Glenn for her leadership. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Mayor. I just, as you, as my fellow counselor was speaking and having served as a volunteer on the library board myself for several years and as well as some of the groups that you collaborate with, including the Friends of the East School and Berry Library, there is a lot of work that goes into supporting all of the activities. And so we certainly appreciate that. I did have a question, though, because you mentioned before that, and a fellow counselor mentioned about our small population, our small community of East School and Berry. Our population is forty-one, just over forty-one thousand people. And so the library brings many benefits, as you said, to taxpayers in East School and Berry. So I look forward to receiving the numbers on how many of the users of the library are taxpaying residents of East School and Berry. And I understand and appreciate that this is a place of community, a special place. But later on in the meeting today, we will be discussing with the Health and Active Living Plaza, Parks and Rec, all of the list of potential fees for residents versus non-residents. So I'm wondering if at any point in the future there may be the possibility of having to consider any fees. The library is free for residents and taxpayers, but if there could be any fees associated with others outside of our community who are using the facilities?
Through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Leahy. Thank you for that. Most definitely, there are a lot of considerations given in terms of services we provide. But they are all anchored within the legislation of the Ontario Libraries Act. And we are most definitely in a situation where we need to abide by that legislation, which means that libraries are free and open to all. There are avenues where public libraries can charge fees. And certainly, those avenues are being explored in terms of revenue-generating opportunities. So we've been in a lot of meetings and interactions with Parks, Recreation and Culture just in looking at some of the permitting that will occur within the Help space. Public libraries can charge fees for the use of their library rooms as per the Libraries Act. So currently, within our new Queensville location, we do have our small boardroom, if you will, space. We have multi-flex space room. And in addition to that, the learning pod. So you'll be certainly advised on that report today. But in addition to that, the library is giving consideration to the permitting, if you will, of our two smaller rooms. Very affordable nominal fees in and around the thirty-dollar price point whereby which individuals can rent that space. We do align with the town of East School and Berry. And the library board has agreed upon the permitting schedule that has been denoted for the space too as well. So we work in collaboration. We open our spaces to the community. We welcome them in. And when there is opportunity for the generation of revenue, we look at that too as well. So thank you.
I just wanted to put my two cents in. I love the library. I don't spend as much time as I used to in there. But I find that people are friendly. And I'm talking not particularly about staff, although they certainly are. But people seem to let their guard down a little bit and start to make friends in the library. And I just, I sit and watch sometimes. And children, of course, are the glue sometimes that Brit put it together with the little ones around. And I just wanted to thank you very much. And please pass it back to staff on how we all appreciate the, the staff that are, that are so ingrained in the library services. And they share it with everyone. And you see the smiles when people leave. You know that they're coming back. So thank you very much. Counselor Cruthers, could I have you move this? Be it resolved that the East School and Berry Public Library presentation dated March 18th, 2025, entitled Annual Report 2024, be received? All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We are at item H, Administration, with myself in the chair. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Veltek.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And following on that really great overview from the library on the programs and services offered in 2024 and the impact that it's had on the community, I'm delighted to turn this over in a moment to Stephanie Cronfley, our Strategic Advisor, who has worked with all of our department heads and the extended management team to try and pull together a summary of the program and service achievements that the town has made in 2024, specifically in relation to advancing the objectives and deliverables laid out in the council-approved strategic plan. And so with your permission, Madam Mayor, I will turn it over to Ms. Cronfley to provide a brief presentation, after which we're happy to take questions and entertain any dialogue the committee may wish.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of council. It's a, it's a pleasure to be here before you today to present the 2024 Strategic Plan Annual Report. This report provides a summary of the town's key activities and milestones from 2024 and represents an accountability measure and a commitment to keeping residents informed and to demonstrate the town's overall progress towards meeting the objectives articulated by council in the 2022 to 2026 strategic plan, particularly now that we are at the midway point through that four-year plan. Before I proceed with the presentation we've put together, I wanted to acknowledge all of the efforts that went into the development of this report. The report highlights and demonstrates the hard work and accomplishments across every department and as such is a product of every department's input and contribution and collaboration, including support from the town's senior and extended management teams, the administration team, and countless staff. I want to extend sincere thanks to the communications team for lending their skills towards the design and layout of the annual report and making it engaging and digestible. And in putting this report together, we endeavor to incorporate some of the comments and feedback received from members of council during last year's 2023 annual reporting process, which really allowed us to enhance the final product. So I hope that you will see some of those changes reflected throughout. So just wanting to express deep appreciation and thanks and credit to all of those involved. If we go to the next slide, just for the benefit of members of the public watching this presentation, the development of the annual report stems from the town's strategic planning framework, which is represented by the inverted triangle here on this slide and identifies the foundational documents that guide the work that the town undertakes on a multi-year, annual, and daily basis. Council's strategic priorities are defined through the strategic plan, which was adopted at the beginning of this term of council and articulates council's goals and commitments to the community, providing the overall blueprint and direction for the town's work across the four-year term. Council's strategic priorities are used to inform the development of the annual business plan, which identifies the actions that will be taken over the course of the year to work towards achieving council's goals. The annual budget allocates resources to enable the delivery of our business plan activities. And those activities are operationalized through departmental and individual work plans. And then at the end of each year, we report on the town's progress and performance against the overall strategic plan through the annual report, which indicates to residents how we've, how we've done relative to what we've committed to and what actions we've undertaken, as well as what impact they've had. So if we go to the next slide, in terms of how the strategic planning framework translates into practical implementation, you can see here that the town manages a number of concurrent, complementary, and parallel processes within the fiscal year, the strategic plan annual report being one of them. Speaking to where we currently are in the cycle, you can see from the activities in yellow that we are engaging in retrospective reporting exercises to evaluate how we did in the previous year. And that comes through in the strategic plan annual report. It will come through eventually in the 2024 annual financial report, as well as in the individual career development reviews that staff undertake internally. And all of these processes are very much interconnected. If we go to the next slide. So the development of the annual report began late last year and included working sessions with the extended management team. It included the use of a digital intake tool for departments to provide progress updates against the activities identified in their 2024 business plans. And it included work with our communications team to create the design. You'll see that the report has a similar structure and look and feel as the 2023 annual report. And in the spirit of continuous improvement, we identified some opportunities to build on last year's report. In particular, you'll see a land acknowledgement, which, following council's approval of the idea-action plan, is something that will be incorporated into the town's public-facing documents. You'll see a mix of qualitative and quantitative reporting organized into each of the five strategic priorities. And these activity updates aim to reflect the actions taken by the town, as well as the key impacts that they've had. You will see as well both internal and external-facing activities, recognizing that we have programs and services that members of the public interact with directly and they can see, as well as projects that are high-profile and familiar to the community. And equally, we have a staff complement who act as internal service providers and engage in projects and activities that are perhaps a little bit more behind the scenes, but are equally as important in providing high-quality service delivery. And so this report aims to provide a little bit more visibility towards those internal-facing activities as well. You'll see a range of stories showcased throughout the report, which provide more in-depth updates on certain activities and profile certain projects in a more sort of accessible storytelling format. You'll see some imagery and people pictures captured by our communications team. You'll see some compelling activity metrics, about eight to 10 per strategic priority. And that will help demonstrate impact. And towards the end, you'll see a summary of awards received by the town and the accomplishments of individual staff over the past year. If we go to the next slide. Great. So I'm just going to take a few minutes to present some of the highlights from the annual report by strategic priority. What you'll see on these slides are really a preview and a flavor of what you'll read in the annual report itself, which provides much more detail. So this won't be a comprehensive list, but rather some of the notable activities that are included in the report. So starting with quality programs and services, there were a number of improvement initiatives that were implemented late last year to enhance service delivery to meet the needs of the community, including the development of digital forums and apps, improving online payment options and financial processes, and improving access to town services. Through the Safer Streets Initiative, which is an ongoing program, there were another number of projects completed that increased traffic safety, including installations of pedestrian crossovers, stop signs, urban shoulders, and so on, and laying the groundwork for the implementation of an automated speed enforcement program. An event strategy was drafted and shaped through an extensive engagement process that included over thirty outreach meetings and workshops with the community and various partners, as well as an incredibly successful survey that generated over 560 responses from the community. A number of recommendations from the Fire and Emergency Service Review were implemented last year, including an updated organizational structure, additional training and training delivery methods, and staff engagement and recognition opportunities. And towards the right of the slide, you'll see some of the relevant activity metrics included. If we go to the next slide. So under Responsible Growth, the town collaborated with York Region to make progress on the YDSS expansion project, which will enable the construction of new homes in EG as the various phases are rolled out. Significant progress was made on the town's heritage strategy, which will be brought forward for adoption this year. There was also substantial progress and headway on non-residential development projects, including the Woodbine One La Blas site, which is projected to open this year, as well as the Metris Development Project anticipated to be finalized in mid-2026. And both of these projects will result in the creation of hundreds of new jobs in East School and Berry. East Willimbury. From an operational perspective, the town managed and maintained hundreds of kilometers of roads, sidewalks, and sewers, secured almost $60 million in ICI capital investment, completed 63 capital projects, and engaged closely with, with the business community to provide wraparound supports. If we go to the next slide. So, in 2024, the town took a number of actions to strengthen its role as an environmental steward in working towards the development of a climate adaptation plan. A working group was struck to, to complete a climate science report and a vulnerability and risk assessment report, which will both be used to prioritize actions that can be taken by the town to adapt to the impacts of climate change. A corporate energy reporting system was developed to allow the town to collect information to conduct analysis of greenhouse gas emissions. In 2024, council approved the town's environmental strategy as well, which initiated a number of implementation actions, including Earth Week events and Eco Fair reconciliation efforts, the establishment of partnerships with key environmental groups, and many others. In 2024, council also adopted the Green Fleet Strategy and procured the town's first two electric vehicles. In addition, the town diverted 19 tons of textiles from landfills, planted over 3,300 trees, registered over 5,500 accounts for e-billing, and as a community, reduced waste collection by 7,550 tons per year per household. We go to the next slide. In an effort to advance the creation of complete communities, the town completed detailed design work to advance Phase One of construction of the downtown revitalization projects in Holland Landing and Mount Albert. The town also worked with YorkNet to support broadband expansion, to increase internet access in rural communities, and to increase speed in urban areas. Public outreach was conducted to update the Active Transportation and Trails Master Plan, which will be presented to council for adoption this year, and significant progress was made on the construction of the Health and Active Living Plaza, which will host a wide range of amenities, including the town's first aquatic center, and slated to open next, earlier, later this year. Pardon me. If we go to the next slide. And, and finally, here is part of fostering a culture of municipal excellence. EG maintains the lowest relative taxes in York Region and continues with its debt-free status. In order to support open data and access to information, there was significant legal and regulatory research and stakeholder engagement that was conducted to support the drafting of a records management policy. A new process was implemented to track and perform analysis on emerging developments and announcements from the province and other levels of government related to new legislation, programs, investments, and grant opportunities. The EG U Belong Employee Experience Strategy was implemented to support employee recruitment, retention, engagement, and recognition, and the town celebrated National Indigenous History Month at the farmer's market, where Georgina Island First Nation presented a workshop and an exhibit on wild rice harvesting and put a performance, put together a performance featuring indigenous singers and dancers. If we go to the next slide. So, today, we're seeking council's approval of this report so that it can be promoted within the community. Similar to previous years, the report will be printed in booklet form and will be available for residents to pick up at town facilities. A digital copy will also be made available on the town's website. A media release has been drafted as well and will be published to inform residents of the report and provide a link to the report. And finally, there will be a communications campaign on the town's social channels that will profile a number of accomplishments highlighted within the report, and this will look very similar to the social media campaign that was conducted following the 2025 budget, which received well over 10,000 views, which really demonstrates the town's growing audience and level of engagement when it comes to sharing facts and impacts and stories about the town. Today's presentation is also part of a broader, comprehensive plan to provide the public with user-friendly information about programs and services to promote what's happening within the town, where each year of council's four-year term, there will be a package consisting of the business plan and budget, the annual report, and the annual financial report, which is released early in the third quarter, all of which have a similar look and feel and consistency and brand, and are taken together, something that provide a complete picture of the fiscal year. We go to the next slide. So, so that concludes the presentation, and we thought it would be nice to end on, on this collage and compilation of pictures, many of which are included in the annual report, and which hopefully allow you to reflect on many of the, the happy moments from, from last year, and reflect on our incredible community and, and the many exciting things to come this year. So, with that, thank you very much. I'm happy to take any questions or draw on the expertise of our department heads to, to support if there are questions pertaining to any specific elements within the annual
Thank you very much. Other, other questions? Counselor, go ahead, please.
Through you, Madam Mayor, and with your leadership as well, and our CAO's leadership along with staff, this is, this is just wow. Like, I am, I am so, um, there's so much to be proud of in here, but it, but it's also impressive from the fact of, I leaned over to Counselor Crowthers and said, "Look how far we've come." The, um, the fact is, is that when we started this council term, this council's talked about making sure that the business plan was built in advance of the budget. That wasn't always the case within this municipality, and the fact that we are, we are now reporting back to us with this, with this closed loop of information, with, with a clear laid-out plan, the fact that we are being so incredibly transparent, and I think that the, you know, there was a couple of comments about the, our small town. You look at that presentation, and this, this town is anything but small. Like, we, we are, we are maturing with the population growth, and the services and the amenities are coming, and I'm, I, I am just proud of what the, the staff of the town have been able to do in this short period of time on the strategic plan, and the accountability against standing in front of the delivery of it is very apparent to me. So, I just wanted to say, through you, Madam Mayor, your leadership, and with the CAO and staff, like, just incredible work, so thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Counselor Johns. Counselor, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Chair, and I, I also wish to thank you for that very clear and concise presentation. You've summed up a tremendous amount of information from departments all across the municipality, so I appreciate that. And I want to say a special thank you to Chris Ross, who is the Environmental Initiatives Program Manager, because prior to this meeting, when I was reviewing the slides, I requested that I be provided with the vulnerability and risk assessment report, so that I could review that, as well as have more information on the development of the climate adaptation plan, which I, which I understand is an ongoing process. So, from when this strategic plan was passed back in early, it was early 2023, it was, it was passed, the strategic plan, it's my understanding that it's a living document. So, as a strategic planner, I wanted to ask you a strategic question about our ability as a municipality to pivot in light of the discussions we've been having about approaches and responses to the tariffs, about on the ongoing changes, it seems on a daily basis, that municipalities and residents might be facing. So, is there a, a built-in strategy on how to pivot as necessary if indeed by the end of this year, or sooner, or next year, we need to pivot in terms of how we implement these plans?
Absolutely. Through you, Madam Mayor, absolutely, and, and thank you, Counselor Leahy, for the question. Going back to our strategic planning framework, it's really comprised of the strategic plan that feeds into the annual report and budget, and departmental and individual work plans. The strategic plan itself, I think, does a really good job of articulating the precise projects and initiatives that council would like to see undertaken and completed over the four-year term, but it also provides flexibility for staff and departments to undertake projects as the town grows and evolves that meet the needs of, of residents. And so, in part, the annual business planning process allows for the town to consider what projects may not be precisely articulated in, in the strategic plan to be brought before council for approval and carried out in the following year, and the fact that we undertake this process on an annual basis provides us with the opportunity to, to pivot, as you say.
Thank you very much. That's good to know, so that if it was necessary, if it was deemed feasible, that there is the opportunity to make some changes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Thank you for this presentation. This is an incredible amount of work that's been done by all staff, but you've brought it together in such a way that makes it easy to understand and to see how far we've come. I had written down clear, transparent, accountable, and Counselor Johns used all of those words, so I'll have to get out my thesaurus and find other words, but that, that is what it is. And, and it's my second term on council, and during our first term, I know we had lots of great ideas, but it wasn't all, and, and staff worked incredibly hard to make those things happen, but we weren't always very clear about what got done, what still needed to be done, were we on track? And, and the, the data that's in this report shows that we're on track, getting things done that council has given direction to staff for. So, thank you for that, and please keep this up. My comment is, more of this, please. Thank you.
Counselor Leahy, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much, through you, Madam Mayor. This question, I don't expect that Ms. Cronfley will be able to necessarily answer, maybe perhaps our, our CAO might be able to answer, but as I was going through the environmental stewardship slide, and, and also indicated me, to me by the program manager, Chris Ross, the development of the corporate and community energy plan is still ongoing. It's not finalized, it's not completed, it's an ongoing process. So, I know that there have been climate adaptation plans ongoing, there's been about three so far, and there's one more, I believe, coming at the end on Thursday evening. And, and so, how does that work into, if the CAO is, is, can possibly answer this question, how does the, those climate adaptation plans work into the ongoing corporate and community energy plans? And I'm wondering if there are any further future opportunities for members of the community or stakeholders in the community to participate in the corporate and community energy plan
General Manager Gandhi, go ahead, please.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Chair. The, a couple of pieces that I just wanted to put together here, those workshops on the climate adaptation plan, they have been occurring. We had one in person, we decided to pivot and move the rest to online, so that they would actually allow for greater access. And so, yes, you're correct in saying that one is on Thursday, and that is intended for marginalized communities. We had intended one that was going to be in person, we moved that to online, and that's actually going to take place in May. So, all of this is to really seek the community's input on a number of climate-related matters, and how they think that the municipality should act, and how they can act themselves. So, all of it, with the input of those individuals, will then develop the climate adaptation plan, the formal plan that we're going to be bringing forward to council. So, I hope that answers your question, Counselor.
Yes, through you, Madam Mayor. So, to be more specific, you're indicating that there's a meeting on Thursday evening, a virtual meeting, and then another opportunity in May.
Correct.
Will there be any other opportunities before the completion of the report of the corporate and community energy plan for members of the community to participate?
So, thank you for that question, Counselor. We are also, I think, believed today, and Chris Ross is available online, if she could confirm this, putting up a survey, so individuals, if they're not able to attend those workshops, will have an opportunity to complete the survey, and that will provide, and we're going to be sharing that through our social media accounts and other ways, so people have an opportunity to complete the survey, and they can respond in the way that, in the timelines that, that suit them. We're hoping to have all of the input in by, by the end of May, so that we can finalize the climate adaptation plan. And Chris Ross, if I'm mistaken in any way, please speak up, because I don't want to share any incorrect information.
Thank you. Thank you very much, through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Susan Leahy. I'm sorry for my voice. Can you hear me? It's, 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 yeah, okay.
Yes, we can hear you. Thank you.
There, there are going to be many opportunities for the community to interact and give feedback. One of them is, as Mrs. Gandhi mentioned, the survey is being launched today, in which community will be able to get their opinion on the impacts that we are seeing for the climate adaptation plan. The reason why we are launching both the climate adaptation plan, the community energy plan, and the Thinking Green Development Standards together, is for them to be able to inform each other and, and create a comprehensive plan for the, for EG and the community to tackle not only the impacts of climate change, but also try to reduce the emissions and the causes of climate change. So, in that regard, we are tackling the future development with the development standards. We are tackling actual emissions by households and, and, and existing buildings with the energy community and corporate energy plan, and also trying to tackle the adaptation part, because we know that the weather is changing, we are getting more impacts and more extreme events in the coming years. So, the idea is for the community to be better adapted to those, to those impacts. So, what we're trying to build, even though it's not completed yet, is to complete by mid, by, by Q2 of next year, a comprehensive plan that tackles energy, emissions, adaptation, and future development. So, the, the, sorry, in, in all this process, the community will be able to participate. So, there is the communication out there, is for right now, there is a survey for the climate adaptation plan, but the, for the, once the community portion of the energy plan is, is in development, we are also, we'll be asking for the community input on that as well.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you very much to you, Ms. Ross, because that really provides the clarity I was seeking. I was trying to understand how those two plans are working together in, in conjunction with feedback from the community. So, I understand clearly now how you, the process that you are working with to come up with those, those two final plans, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm wondering if I could have a mover for the recommendation, Counselor Crone. Thank you very much. Be it resolved that Administration Presentation and Report Admin 2025-01 dated March 18th, 2025, entitled Strategic Plan Annual Report be received, and that the 2024 Strategic Plan Annual Report be approved and promoted in the community. All those in favor? And that's carried. We are now at item two, Administration Report, Proposed Procurement Approach in Response to Tariffs. I'll pass this to Mr. CAO, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This report is before you as a follow-up to a resolution adopted by council at its recent meeting, requesting that staff come back with information and a proposed resolution to better understand and to strategize in terms of actions that might be undertaken by the municipality to deal with the ongoing threat of increased tariffs imposed from the United States to Canada. So, with your permission, Madam Mayor, Ms. Cronfley has done a lot of work on this with some of the management team, and has, in my opinion, done a great job sort of providing some background, some analysis, and what I believe is a really great proposed resolution for your consideration, with the full expectation that council members may want to see this as a, a starting point, you may want to massage it and adjust it a little bit to suit whatever your final preferences are, but I think our, our attempt was to give you something very well-thought-out to, to start with, and hopefully take you the majority of the way there as you, as you consider this item. So, with your permission, Madam Mayor, I think it might be really helpful for Ms. Cronfley to provide a little bit of additional comments and context.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, and through you, Madam Mayor. So, as the CAO mentioned, the report before you today is, is in response to the, the direction that we received from council at the last council meeting on March the 4th, which provided a request to staff to bring forward a resolution that council could a request to staff to bring forward a resolution that council could consider regarding the town's procurement practices in response to tariffs, and in response to the provincial government's announcement prohibiting U.S. companies from competing for Ontario government contracts. So this report proposes a draft resolution, as requested, that represents a statement and a set of actions certainly for you to consider and amend as you see fit. As the CAO mentioned, this is a starting point for council's deliberation and decision-making, and it aims to signal the town's support of the ongoing efforts being made across all orders of government to respond to not only the imposition of tariffs, but also the threat of tariffs and the uncertainty that that causes. And it demonstrates the town's and council's commitment to supporting those efforts, in this case specifically with how we procure goods and services. You will see that there are a considerable number of whereas clauses reflected throughout the resolution, which attempt to articulate the situation that we find ourselves in, because that stage setting is really just as important as the action statements themselves. And those action statements represent a strategy to, where the option is available to us, prioritize the procurement of local and Canadian goods and services first and foremost, as well as products and suppliers from countries outside of the United States. And where there are limited alternatives or no alternatives to U.S. suppliers, or where procurement with the United States is necessary to maintain ongoing town operations and to support business continuity, then that will be a last resort, and will be thoroughly assessed by staff on a case-by-case basis. And also, just for your awareness, the resolution as a whole was prepared with due consideration towards what other municipalities have done, how other council resolutions have been drafted from municipalities across the province, and with consideration towards what actions have been taken at the provincial and federal level. And that alignment is really part of a deliberate and intentional strategy to support and work collaboratively with our partners at the municipal, provincial, and federal level to advance a collective and multi-jurisdictional response, recognizing that we are part of a big movement, we are not in this alone, and our actions are more impactful and influential when they are unified and coordinated with our municipal and government counterparts. And while that sort of alignment and collaboration is, of course, a tactical approach to respond to tariffs, it is also a strengthening of the bonds that exist between municipalities as we all work together in the best interest of residents. So I hope that the information and the actions highlighted within the report provide, help inform council's decision-making and support council's objectives as they relate to the town's procurement strategy. I'm happy to take any questions or to direct any questions as needed to members of our senior management team.
Counselor Cruthers, go ahead, please.
Thank you, thank you for this incredibly detailed report, very thorough, and I really appreciate it. I like the recommendations that are before us, Madam Mayor, and I'm happy to move them. I would like to make one change, though, in our, after the whereas's, we have, be it therefore resolved that, 1, 2, 3, the third one, that has the numbers beside it. Number one, prioritize procurement of Canadian goods, services, and suppliers, love that. The second part of that, and will not purchase goods and services that can be easily traced to have originated in the U.S. I agree with that in principle, but I worry about unintended consequences and leaving us open to potential lawsuits on how that is interpreted by someone who is applying for a procurement contract. So on the face of it, love it, but I just wanted to take out those words, and will not purchase goods and services that can be easily traced to have originated from the U.S. So for example, if we were buying a fire truck, and the parts all came from the U.S., and it was assembled here in Canada, and provided jobs to Canadians at the assembly plant, this would preclude us from buying it, and we'd have to buy the fire truck from someplace like China, right? So we just don't want to tie our hands. I think prioritizing procurement of Canadian goods, services, and suppliers where possible is what the note we want to hit, and staff understand the direction of council, and I think that accomplishes that without tying our hands. So I'd like to move that with that modification. Thank you.
Counselor Crone, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I think through you two, Ms. Cronfley, they seem to be giving you all the easy stuff to do today. Of course, I'm kidding. Wow, this is great, and I just wanted to second the notion from my colleague, Ms. Cruthers, that I worry that we, in our zeal to be so patriotic and, you know, pro-Canadian, that we might end up shooting ourselves in the foot. So I like the flexibility that is being suggested here. I think it's prudent that we can still exercise our independence and buying from who we want, but not, you know, forcing us down a path that would cost the taxpayers even more. And so that ultimately is what we want to avoid. So happy to second the suggested change by Lauralee Cruthers, Counselor Cruthers.
Counselor, go ahead, please.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Chair. So I have two related questions, and one of them is also with regard to, there are lots of whereas's, and one of them's very specific, which reflects what is happening as we know of today, right? So with effective dates and with specific figures like $30 billion worth of imports as of March 4th, et cetera. So will there be ongoing updates or amendments needed if we prove something so specific in the future? Will you need to be coming back on a regular basis with other modifications? That's my question number one. And question number two is a question of concern for the amount of work that this is potentially generating. So if we are prioritizing the procurement of Canadian goods, and if someone is monitoring existing contracts, et cetera, whose shoulders does that fall upon to potentially be monitoring and prioritize, looking into so many details that could potentially affect every department? Thank you.
Thank you, and through you, Madam Mayor, to Counselor Leahy. On your first question, as it relates to the resolution and the inclusion of dates, I would suggest that this resolution is a snapshot in time and is tied to today's date. This is what we know as of today. As I mentioned, it is also closely aligned and was developed with consideration towards what other municipalities have included in their resolutions, and I believe stands on its own. As there are changes in the coming weeks and months and years, staff will certainly report back to council as necessary and as the situation evolves. On your second question, related to the level of work that is, that will be undertaken by town staff, certainly it would largely fall to the finance department and their procurement team to support a lot of this work in partnership with legal services as staff endeavor to review existing contracts and identify any risks as it relates to existing contracts, and of course, in collaboration with the department themselves. So I would suggest that departments who have upcoming plans to procure would work closely with our procurement team, as they always do, and with legislative, legal and legislative services, to, where needed, include language and clauses into competitive bids and any resulting contracts that would advance council's objective.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cronfley. So as long as our CAO doesn't have any concerns about the additional workload, because my priority is always about our staff and our staff feeling respected and in the roles that they serve, I was just curious about that increase in the workload that has come up in the past month. So if, I'm just looking out for the staff and the workloads. So do you see any potential for an increase in workload?
Madam Mayor, I guess I would, through you, I'd go back to the comment that was made earlier about the strategic plan, and what do we do to pivot, and what do we do to deal with emerging issues? This is clearly a very significant local, provincial, and federal issue. So I think to ignore it would be irresponsible, and I think that we are taking measured and appropriate steps to align with the municipalities throughout Ontario and actually across Canada, as well as to align with the provincial government and federal government initiatives. In terms of workload and effort, Ms. Cronfley is very well sort of connected and monitoring all of the significant networks that we belong to that ensure that we are leveraging each other's efforts. Ms. Cronfley talked about the fact that this resolution that's before you aligns very closely with similar resolutions and efforts being undertaken by the larger municipal, community, provincial, and federal jurisdictions. And so we will continue to work in concert. We are certainly not off on a direction independently and inventing wheels on our own on an issue that is this significant and has local, provincial, and federal implications. So I believe that we're taking the appropriate steps.
Yes, thank you very much through you, Madam Chair, and I appreciate that reassurance. And it's wonderful to see the municipalities all working together, and as well as the collaborations with all levels of government. I think it's a, some positive outcomes out of these challenges that we face. So thank you very much.
I'm not seeing any questions, comments, at this point. We do have a resolution moved by Counselor Cruthers as amended. Proposed procurement approach in response to tariffs be received, and that the following resolution and the recommendations contained therein be adopted and approved by council. Whereas Canada and the United States have a longstanding and valued relationship as neighbors, allies, and trading partners that offers mutual stability, prosperity, and opportunity, and whereas council believes that maintaining a positive and cooperative partnership and strong economic ties benefits both Canadian and American industries, companies, and citizens. And whereas despite this longstanding partnership, the United States government enacted 25% tariffs on select imports from Canada as of March 4th, 2025, with the intention to expand tariffs to steel and aluminum effective March 12th, 2025. And whereas the United States government has announced their intention to impose broad-based 25% tariffs on imports from Canada and a 10% levy on Canadian energy effective April 2nd, 2025. And whereas the Canadian government responded with 25% tariffs on $30 billion worth of municipal imports from the United States as of March 4th, 2025, with the intention to increase tariffs to $155 billion worth of goods if the United States tariffs are maintained. And whereas the Ontario government responded with a ban on United States-based companies participating in provincial government procurement, and encouraged municipalities to consider implementing similar response at the local level. And whereas local economies are particularly vulnerable to tariffs and trade uncertainty, and whereas municipalities can play a crucial role as part of the Pan-Canadian approach to combat tariffs and protect local, Ontario, and Canadian businesses through coordinated and strategic procurement practices, be it therefore resolved that the town of East Gwillingbury supports the measures that the federal and provincial governments have implemented in response to the current and proposed United States tariffs, tariffs in Canada imports, sorry, in Canadian imports, and that the town of East Gwillingbury calls upon the federal and provincial governments to remove trade barriers between provinces and impediments towards preferring Canadian companies in procurements for capital projects and supplies, and that effective immediately and until the threat of tariff is lifted, the town of East Gwillingbury will prioritize procurement of Canadian goods, services, and suppliers where possible, and review circumstances and explore options where there are limited alternatives to goods, services, and suppliers from the United States on a case-by-case basis, and monitor existing contracts to identify and mitigate potential risks, and that the town of East Gwillingbury procurement bylaw number, bylaw number 2019-146 be applied consistently with this resolution.
Take a breath.
Yes. And that's carried. We are now on item L, sorry, I, Corporate Services with Counselor Cruthers and the Chair.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. We have one item, and that is our Earth Week program, and we have our Chris Ross on the line to talk us through this memo. Thank you. I should actually turn it over to General Manager Gandhi to introduce, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The memo before you speaks to all of the events that we have planned during Earth Week, and the time period of that is from April 22nd to 26th. I believe Counselor Crone spoke about the festivities, the activities that are happening around Earth Day in April, so this memo speaks specifically to that, along with the cleanup events that are happening, actually for several weeks, and the memo outlines the dates of that at various locations throughout the municipality. Chris Ross, our manager of environmental initiatives, is on the phone or online if anybody has any questions specific to this memo.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments? I, in particular, am looking forward to the movie screening of The Lorax, love that. That's fun, that'll be right here in chambers on Friday, April 25th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. And the Eco Fair, as the council liaison to the Trails Committee, the Trails Committee will be supporting that event as well, they'll have a table there. Any comments? Counselor Foster.
Thank you. In the past, there was an attempt that all East Gwillingbury buildings, where possible, went black for an hour during Earth Day. Is that something that we have considered, or I don't believe we've done it in a number of years? I don't know if that's something that's been considered or not.
So that's Earth, yeah.
I can go further and remember that this was an initiative from Counselor Marlene Johnson at the time. I know that I used to have to go to the fire hall on Saturday night and turn everything off for an hour, you know, in case somebody drove by. Just wondering if it's been considered.
I believe Earth Hour is different than Earth Day, and I'm not sure the date of Earth Hour, I feel like it might be this month. I don't know, I don't know the date, and it is on the weekend, as you pointed out, so it's not a time when, there should be a lot of lights on. I would hope that we are on the weekend when no one's in the buildings, we're running minimal lights anyway. So I will turn that over to our general manager to elaborate.
Thank you through you, Madam Chair. I will actually ask Chris Ross if we do recognize that. I don't believe so. I mean, we've now actually taken this from an Earth Day to an Earth Week, and in fact, Earth Month by way of the community cleanups that are happening. And so we're taking more deliberate steps to recognize all the things that we need to do to support our environment. But Chris, if there are anything, if there's anything you'd like to add, please go ahead.
Thank you very much through you, Madam Mayor, sorry, Madam Chair. Earth Hour is on Saturday, March 22, so it's this weekend. And what we've done in the past years is to make online postings for, to encourage residents and people in general to turn the lights off. But other than that, because it's a weekend, we do, we only do that public communication.
Thank you very much. I think that Earth Hour has had less significance, and correct me if I'm wrong, over the years as we start doing as we start doing more concrete steps to help the environment rather than the token of the hour off when no one was in the building anyway. So I think it's great in our homes to do it so that we have an appreciation for what it's like when you have no power for an hour. But I don't think that we need this symbolism at our workplaces, and hopefully we are running minimal power anyways. Thank you for that. Is there anything else you want to add, Ms. Ross?
No, just encourage council to attend the events, please, and to invite your residents as well.
Thank you. We can all send that out on Facebook when that's up. So seeing nothing else, a motion to receive, councillor Crown. Thank you very much. Be it resolved that the Corporate Services memorandum dated March 18, 2025, entitled "Earth Week Program" be received. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you very much. Madam Mayor, I'll turn the chair back to you.
Thank you very much. We're on item J, Finance, with councillor Johnson, the chair.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. So there is one item under Finance, and that's a Finance memo for remuneration and expenses for the year ending December 31, 2024. And Mr. Marshall is actually remote today. Mr. Marshall, I was wondering if you wanted to set this up for folks.
Sure. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. This is a memo that's required annually under the Municipal Act, and it spells out the remuneration that's paid to members of council throughout the calendar year. This memo is for the, it shows the expenses that were incurred in 2024 for members of council, and it meets the requirements under the Municipal Act. And happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Members of the committee, any questions, comments? Councillor Crown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Marshall. Could you just confirm for me the amounts for the, I think each council member had a communications budget, I want to say $5,000, and a discretionary budget of $2,500. Do I have that correct?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Yes, for 2024, those numbers are correct.
Okay, thank you. So, Mr. Chair, this is, you know, probably one of those times, you know, being in government, where I think back to my decades in the corporate world, where, you know, as an individual, you know, executive team member, I was given a, an expense account that I had to live within. And if I exceeded that expense account, there would be repercussions. And now, thankfully, that never happened to me. But I always had help. We had policies and procedures in place that made sure that didn't happen. Now, as this report will show, that one of the members of council has exceeded a budget. And that, now, ostensibly, that was covered, the overage was covered through another budget. And so no need to call in the auditors and raise the alarm bells. But it still speaks to a problem that we have here, where I think we have a lack of policy definition or guidelines. Certainly, since I've been here, I don't think I've seen a full framework for how we approve our expenses, whether they be communications or discretionary. I'm not even sure what's allowed, what isn't. So there's, to me, there's a lot of vagueness to what we have. This wouldn't cut it in the private sector. I'm concerned that it's happening here. And I say this not to draw attention or make any one member of council uncomfortable. I'm saying this to make all of us uncomfortable, because we drastically slashed our budgets last year. I think they're 500 for communications, 500 for discretionary, because we knew we had to tighten our belts to get the tax rate lowered. So we did that very consciously. But the concern I have is that it's so small now that the danger of us exceeding them is even greater. So I would, for me, I would suggest we defer this. I'd like to see something from staff about what our policies or our guidelines are so that we go into this year eyes wide open, knowing what we can bill back to the taxpayer. Because if we're truly going to say that we respect, have respect for taxpayers and the tax dollars, well, we need to line up our words with our actions. And I'm not sure we're there. So if we were to continue to exceed budgets, I think people, our residents, would call us hypocrites, and they'd be right. So my suggestion is we defer this, but we also ask staff for some policies, some guidelines going forward, so we know what we can do. And I suspect we'll have to tinker with them a bit. Anyway, sorry, that's my rant for today.
Thank you, councillor Crown. Councillor Crowthers.
Thank you. I agree. We should, we now need a policy on this. Up until now, in my years on council, and perhaps Madam Mayor can speak to longer term than that, I've never seen anyone go over, I've never seen anyone get anywhere close to their discretionary expense allowance. This is the first time that I've seen a councillor go 125% over their budget. That means that with the new lower budget this year, that the amount that it's over exceeds this year's budget, too. I don't believe it should be covered by communications. Council is very clear that we wanted that money set aside for communications. It was not just another slush fund. It's not just used for discretionary. If you want to stay at a hotel, you can use your communications budget. The discretionary is capped at 250, 2,500, and this is significantly over that. I was under the impression, whenever I've done my expenses, if I was over, it would come out of my own pocket, not come out of some other budget. So I've always made sure I call finance to make sure that I still have available room, and there's no surprises when this report comes out. So I would agree that I would like this to come back with some input from staff on what we can do around a policy, because it's my understanding that the communications budget was enveloped or sweated, that you can't use communications money for discretionary. I think we need to respect the directives that were passed here at this table and keep the communications budget separate from discretionary, and respect the budget that is put in, and as everyone else on council has, and figure out how we're going to deal with this one particular overage and what the repercussions are if it continues to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Crowthers. Councillor Leahy.
Thank you very much through you, Madam, Mr. Chair. My apologies. I would like also further clarification. I think the entire system would benefit from that policy on what money is allowed to be spent. I recall vividly during the budget session and discussions that there were two councillors here who insisted that they use their own personal funds to pay for ads, et cetera. And it's my understanding, and we are in a democratic process here, that if there is a budget that is put to every one of the councillors, that councillors don't have the option to opt out of that. And if they declare during the budget, as two councillors did during the budget discussions, that they use their own funds, then that creates an unfair situation in terms of the democratic process. If we are all going to have the same amount of funds available to us, then what is the policy around others who may be wealthier to be spending unlimited personal sources in the process of doing their jobs? So I welcome further insight into the policy, and I welcome feedback from Mr. Marshall, who is not here today. And I'd like clarification on the spending of personal funds, so that the appearance is generated that there is an unequal playing field. And I believe there is even potentially precedent being set of other councillors and other municipalities with the integrity commissioner having spent their own personal funds, as two councillors have stated on record during the budget deliberations. So I welcome further insight into this, but I believe that the language being used should be respectful, and that there should be no implications that there has been any impropriety. Because when it was first presented by Mr. Marshall, and I would like to have clarification while we have him online, he stated clearly that all of the salaries, et cetera, and expenses met the standards that are required by reporting. So could we please have clarification of that, Mr. Marshall?
So through you, Mr. Chair. In terms of clarification, I think the statement that I made was that the reporting that this memo provides met the requirements of the Municipal Act. So the Municipal Act says we have to report out on expenditures and remuneration that's paid to members of council, and that's what this memo does.
Thank you very much. So through you, Mr. Chair. I look forward to a future policy that outlines with greater specification what qualifies as expenditures for communications, for professional development. And I take pride in the job that I do, working very hard to advocate for and participate in opportunities to move the priorities of the town forward when I conduct my job. And if councillors decide and choose not to spend any of their communications funds or a small portion of their communication funds, that's their choice. I choose to work hard at communicating with my residents. So I look forward to a further review and discussion and policymaking around definitions. And I look forward to answers about whether councillors are allowed to opt out of the budget that they are given and spend their own personal money on communications, et cetera. Thank you.
We have councillor Crowthers.
Thank you. I think you might be misreading the report. There wasn't a problem with the communications. The problem was with the discretionary that is over by 25%. So it's over by this year's whole budget. That's where the problem lies. I think you can look up the Municipal Act to find out about electioneering and the amounts that you're allowed to spend within the election period and without, outside the election period. I personally don't spend my own funds on electioneering outside of the election period, and I stay within the discretionary budget and the communications budget that we all voted on here. We voted on an amount. And I think the question now is what happens when someone exceeds that amount by a significant amount? It's not about the communications. Councillor Leahy, you're well under on your communications budget. Others have reached out and spent significantly more to communicate with their residents. It is the discretionary that I have concerns with. And to me, discretionary is completely separate from communications. And I don't think that you can draw from a communications budget to put into your, to increase your discretionary. That, to me, does not make sense. It's not good budgeting. And to me, it's not fair to the taxpayers. When they listen to our budget deliberations and they hear us set a limit to find out that someone can just go over that limit, why even bother setting a limit if councillors can go over that limit? So I hope that it's not that we're putting all of our discretionary together, because I worked very hard to keep mine at zero, and I don't want to be paying for someone else's overage. So I would look to Mr. Marshall to bring something back to us that can talk about how we can address this. And it was councillor Crown who said that he wanted something back from staff, so I'll leave it to you to put a resolution on the floor.
Councillor Leahy has her hand up, councillor Crown.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The statements that were just made are misleading. Each of us has an equal budget given to us, and if there needs to be further clarification of discretionary, then I welcome that. None of us exceeded our budgets, and I do not believe that the best way to look at this is to hash it out here when we don't have all of the facts necessarily. I am not, if you look closely at the salaries and what the final numbers came to, I am not the councillor who spent the most money here on council. So if you'd like to take a magnifying glass and take it apart receipt by receipt, I welcome that. But I do insist upon that there not be misleading information put out there, and that we go through the proper process of discussing this further and all of the other implications, like spending personal money outside of, in addition to, the budget. And so I would like to respectfully ask that we put this in the hands of Mr. Marshall and the Finance Department and the Legal Department, and whoever else is appropriate on staff, to look at those numbers fully. But again, I'd like to say that even after any of the expenses that have been accounted for, I am not the highest-paid person sitting on council. Thank you.
Councillor Crowthers allowed the opportunity for the rebuttal on that.
Thank you. I've been accused of saying something misleading. I'm looking at a report, and in the report, it says the discretionary allowance was 2,500. It says that councillor Leahy spent 3,116, and under her discretionary other expenses. I don't like being accused of being misleading when I'm just reading from the report. Thank you.
Councillor Crown, you had your hand up.
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I think if we could just, my motion would be that we defer receipt and approval of this report, and that we ask staff to come back to us with guidelines or policies around what our budget, spending for our respective budgets will be for 2025. Thank you.
Thanks, councillor Crown. I defer to Madam Clerk to help kind of guide us through, if you were able to put that on the screen.
Through you, Mr. Chair. General Manager Marshall actually has his hand up. Just wanted to advise you of that.
Oh, my sincere apologies. Sorry, Mr. Marshall.
No, no problem. Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to advise that the Municipal Act says we have to report out on these expenses by March 31. So if the intent is to come back with a policy, my humble suggestion would be to receive the report, but to then direct staff to come back with some, whatever council was looking for in terms of direction.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Councillor Crown, are you, you're amicable to that amendment?
Yeah, happy to make that touch it.
And through you, Madam Clerk, you're leading the way there for us. Thank you. So on the screen, it states that, so moved by councillor Crown, be it resolved that the Finance memorandum, memorandum dated March 18, 2025, entitled "Statement of Council Remuneration and Expenses for the Year Ending December 31, 2024" be received, and that council requests staff report back regarding policies and guidelines on council expenses. So councillor Crown has moved that. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Mr. Marshall, do you have anything further for the committee in regard to finance?
Through you, Mr. Chair. Nothing at this time.
Thank you, sir. Does this committee have anything further for Mr. Marshall at this time? Seeing none, Madam Chair, I will turn it back over to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're at item K, Development Services, and I'll chair this portion in the absence of So on item one at this time, Development Services memo, proposed site plan application 1656, Green Lane, SPA 2410. And Acting General Manager Toubnik, if you could please present this item. And Acting General Manager Kupnick, if you could please present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a development memo simply to make council aware of a site plan application received by staff on December of last year. It's proposing, it was received, submitted by the New Roads Automotive Group, which is a Toyota Automotive dealership, and proposing a showroom, service center, and sales facility. And it's located on Green Lane. And I'm happy to take any questions that councillors may have on this item.
I'm not seeing any questions at this time. Could I have a mover? Councilor Crone? All those in favor? And that's carried. Item 2 is the Development Services Memo, Proposed Site Plan Application 18-1-8-2 Young Street SPA 24-11. And I could, Acting General Manager Kupnick.
Thank you once again, Madam Mayor. This is a second memo bringing to council's attention a site plan application submitted by Costco Wholesale Canada. And it's related to them converting their existing Costco into a Costco Business Center. And most of the changes are related to the external elevation around signage and internal configuration to the building itself. Happy to take any questions of council.
Questions? I'm not seeing any at this time. Could I have a mover, please? Councilor Foster. Be it resolved that the Development Services Memorandum dated March 18, 2025 entitled Proposed Site Plan Application 18-8-2 Young Street SPA 24-11 be received. All in favor? And that's carried. I'm now down to Item L Parks Recreation Culture with Councilor Crone in the chair.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We have two items on the agenda today. We have, the first one is Parks and Recreation Culture Report, PRC 2025-4 Health and Active Living Plaza Fees. Mr. Carmazin, I'm going to hand it over to you to walk us through that.
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The report prepared for council provides a fee structure for the Health and Active Living Plaza permit and drop-in programs. The fees proposed provide market rates for permitting space that is consistent with the permit policy and pricing policy adopted by council. As detailed in the report, Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff have worked very closely with the East Colomberry Public Library to ensure consistent and high-quality customer service for permitting of space at the Health and Active Living Plaza. Happy to answer any questions that council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Carmazin. Could I have a mover for this report, please? Councilor Foster? Okay. Are there any questions from Mr. Carmazin? You've done a thorough job, Mr. Carmazin. I think it's important to know, certainly when you look at this report, if I can just say the, you know, I harp on here about looking for alternative revenue sources, and this is going to generate an additional $500,000 a year for the community. I think you sold yourself short on that one and buried the lead. That's great news. That represents more than a percentage point that we don't have to go to the taxpayers for. So that's really important. Unless there's no other questions? Councilor Foster has moved this. All those in favor? All right. The motion is carried. Second item on the agenda is the Parks and Recreation Culture Memo 2024 Recreation and Culture Services Update. Can I have a, Mr. Carmazin, can you take us through that, please?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. The memorandum prepared for council is an annual report back that provides annual update on our recreation service delivery for the year. I'd like to highlight a few of the metrics provided. As reported in the unaudited financial statement, our overall total gross revenue generated in 2024 has increased by over 30%, with net revenue of over 15% after expenses. Participation in our registered programs has increased by over 50%. In addition, with cost recovery analysis for pre-planning of registered programming, our total number of registered programs have actually decreased, resulting in greater program planning efficiency. I'd like to also acknowledge and thank our staff member Rhonda Wilson and the recreation team for their collective efforts to continue to develop programming that both anticipates and responds to the needs of our growing population. I would also like to mention that as a continuous improvement measure, as we grow with future year-end reports to council, staff will seek to provide either presentation to council similar to the library presentation that council received today or a memo with some performance metrics in particular, some infographics with revenue participation rates, programs operated, to further articulate it and detail out the performance of the department in particular with regards to recreation programming. Happy to answer any questions that council may have related to the memo.
Thank you. Can I have a mover for this one? Councilor Leahy? Are there any questions? Councilor Carruthers?
I just wanted to comment that this is a very thorough report and I appreciate all the information that was in it. And I look forward to seeing this next year in a bigger presentation because there's a lot of numbers in there and it's really good for those watching at home to see it up on some slides. So thank you very much for this and it looks like some great work happening in your department. So thank you.
Are there any other questions from Mr. Carmazin? Okay, seeing none. This was moved by Councilor Leahy. All those in favor? Motion is carried. Mr. Carmazin, do you have anything else you'd like to share with committee?
Thank you through you, Mr. Chair. I just have one additional item. This past week, the town hosted our first-ever job fair at the Canada Hall where a number of departments participated, in particular Parks, Rec, and Culture for employment at the Health and Active Living Plaza and seasonal employment. The town also partnered with the York Region and York Region Transit for transit options for travel to and from employment within East Colomberry. I'm thrilled to report that the job fair was an overwhelming success with over 300 attendees. And as a reminder for the public, all our job postings are listed online. In addition, I'd like to thank Parks, Recreation, and Culture staff, people and belonging, as well as communications and marketing staff for leading the efforts to organize this job fair.
Great job indeed. Councilor Leahy?
Thank you very much. Through you, Mr. Chair. And I'd like to say, having dropped into that job fair, I was curious to see how many people would turn out and what it was all about. I'm very pleased to see that there were tremendous crowds and that was reported back to me from Mr. Aaron Carmazin, the General Manager, that there was a great turnout. When I left, there had been 66 people through. Do you have a total for, at the end of the day, how many people had come through? And I must say that the people who were there, who were applying for jobs, one of them commented to me that they were very impressed with how the job fair was set up and they were very enthusiastic about the possibility of participating at our municipality with employment.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I can't say that I had trouble finding parking when I attended the job fair. And I do know that there was over 300 people. I do apologize, I don't have the exact number, but I would endeavor to send that information out to council as a whole.
Thank you. Are there any questions from committee to Mr. Carmazin? Seeing none, I will hand the chair back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We're at Item M Engineering and Public Works with Councilor Leahy in the chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. There is no business at this time. However, I'd like to ask General Manager Molinari if he has anything he'd like to add.
Thank you. And through you, Madam Chair. Yeah, there is one item, and that is, as, I've worked with Mr. Paul Newman for a number of years. And Paul and I have worked together in a couple of organizations, and I can't say enough about the service that he's provided for the town and the support that he's provided to me over the years. And although, sorry to see him retire, I know that it's time for him to go and I wish him very well in that retirement. And there'll be more on that as time, as he gets a little closer to his last day at the town. Further to that, I'm very, excuse me, I'm very happy to announce that after an extensive search for replacement for Paul with big shoes to fill, Kevin Brake from my area was successful in obtaining that position. And yesterday was actually his first day in the chair. And I'm just very proud and happy that Kevin was able to step up to that and looking forward to working with Kevin over the next few years and him providing very capable assistance as we move forward. So I just wanted to let council know about that and just say how happy I am that we've got some, a great person kind of coming into that chair. And we'll be looking to recruit for Kevin's replacement in the manager role over the coming weeks. So just a bit of an update from EPW. Thank you.
Thank you very much, General Manager Molinari. We all, we're all going to miss Paul, but we look forward to working with Kevin. So through you, Madam Clerk, I'd like to ask if we need to have a motion to accept the summary of the employment status from General Manager Molinari?
Through you, Madam Chair. It is customary sometimes that councillors would want to pass a verbal motion, so to receive the verbal update provided by the General Manager. So with that, you just require someone to move to receive the verbal update?
Very good. Can I have a mover to receive General Manager Molinari's update? Councilor Foster, thank you very much. And does anyone on council have any further questions for General Manager Molinari? Seeing none, I would seek to approve that updated update from the General Manager. All those in favor? And that is carried. So back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have in front of us Fire and Emergency Services with Councilor Foster in the chair.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Nothing on the agenda for today unless Chief Main Price has some updates. He's nodding his head, so we'll go to Chief Main Price.
Through the chair, thank you for the opportunity. Even though we were experiencing this wonderful warm weather and we're watching the snow melt, we did experience just a few short weeks ago tremendous amount of snow that resulted in a lot of cooperation from the members of our community. So just on behalf of East Colomberry Fire and Emergencies, we want to thank all the members of our community who not only worked to dig out the hydrants in front of their own homes, but in their neighbors' homes to protect themselves and their community. And we had a number of members of the community send in pictures for our social media campaign, which we're going to promote and offer up some gifts. But certainly, just a huge thanks to all the members of the community who supported themselves and their members and their community members by digging out their hydrants to assist us if required. So huge thanks on behalf of them. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thanks, Chief. Can I have a mover to accept the verbal? Councilor Crone? And all in favor? Uh, hang on, I want to go to, okay. All in favor? And that is carried. I'll go back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. We have nothing under, oh, Marquez. You have something? Go ahead, please.
Madam Mayor, sorry for the confusion. Very briefly, I just wanted to thank Chief Main Price. He invited myself and our communications director, Bethany Leo, last weekend to participate with the fire crew in their live-fire training. And so it was, it was an incredible experience last Sunday to put on the gear and put on the masks and enter with the fire crew into a building that had live-fire and to hold the fire hose and see the different outstanding, not only training work, but just work that our fire crew does to prepare themselves for the real-life situations. And just, it couldn't help but increase my admiration for the team, for the leadership in the fire service and the great work that they do. And really valued the opportunity to kind of get a little bit of a snippet into the life of our frontline responders. So just thank you to the leadership of Chief Main Price and the team and really enjoyed the experience in the training session last weekend. Thank you.
We are now at Item P Other Business. Madam Clerk, could you please confirm the topic of the upcoming workshop? I believe it's planned for April 8th.
Through you, Madam Mayor. That's correct. And there's an educational workshop meeting that has been scheduled for April 8th meeting date. This session is going to be delivered in closed session in accordance with the Municipal Act provision 239-31, and it's going to be focusing on customer service and de-escalation training for members of council.
Thank you. Questions? Okay, we'll move along to Item Q, which is the adjournment. Councilor Crone, would you move that? Thank you very much. Be it resolved that the meeting of the committee of the whole council adjourn at 4:00 PM. All in favor? And that's carried. And we are, we are finished for the day. Thank you very much.
No.